Yeah, I think that was.
Time is seven P M. A call to order. The City of Torrington planning and zoning commission meeting for August sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. Attendance is by Zoom or in person at City Hall Auditorium room two eighteen one forty Main Street, Torrington, Connecticut. Instructions for Zoom are available online at W W W dot Torrington C T dot org slash Zoom. There's a link there to join the meeting. Call in at one six four six five five eight eighty-six fifty-six, meeting ID seven ninety-five dash nine fifty dash seventy thirty-five, passcode nine zero seven one four eight. Moving on to agenda item number two, attendance serving on the commission this evening remotely is Donovan Riley and Tom Tellman. In person Greg Peresino, myself Greg Mealy also in attendance is our city planner Jeremy Leifert. Moving on to agenda item number three, minutes for approval, A for July nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
I'll move the minutes.
And for the record, Diane Carroll is on Zoom also and let her in if you could.
Yeah, I did.
You did. Thank you. How are you Diane? Okay. Right. I'm sorry, back to the minutes.
Yes, I I moved the minutes.
I have a motion, I have a second in the minutes.
Second.
Thank you Donovan. All those in favor?
Hi.
I.
I abstain, Tom Tellman.
Thank you, Tom. Moving on to agenda item number four, time is seven oh one, public hearings beginning at seven P M, August sixteen, twenty twenty-three, City Hall Auditorium. Room two eighteen one forty Main Street, Torrington, Connecticut. A proposed change of zoning regulation applicant McCall Behavioral Health Network proposal revise section three point one table of uses subsection one point eight three to allow a group care facility with seven to twelve residents by special exception in the local business zone. Serving on the commission this evening is Donovan Riley, Tom Tellman, Diane Carroll. Remotely serving in person Greg Peresino, myself Greg Mealy also in attendance is our city planner Jeremy Leifert. Commissioner Peresino, do you have a legal notice, please?
Planning and zoning commission has scheduled a public hearing on the following application on Wednesday, August sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, beginning at seven P M. In the City Hall Auditorium room two eighteen one forty Main Street, Torrington, Connecticut. A proposed change of zoning regulations applicant McCall Behavioral Health Network proposal revise section three point one table of uses subsection one point eight three to allow a group care facility with seven to twelve residents by special exception in the local business zone. Time of hearing, seven P M. Copies of the above mentioned plans and applications are on file in the land use office, City Hall one forty Main Street, Torrington, Connecticut. Greg Mealy Chair, Planning and Zoning Commission dated in Torrington, Connecticut, the second day of August, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you, Commissioner Peresino. Is the applicant in attendance?
Yes, Mister Chairman. Uh, my name is Martin Connor. I'm a certified planner with the American Institute of Certified Planners. I've been a planner for over thirty-five years and I had the pleasure of sitting next to you for twenty-two years of those.
Thank you.
So it feels really, really strange to be out on this side of the microphone.
Sure you'll do a good job.
Uh, I'm here.
Were the mailings done?
Uh, there were no mailings necessary.
Not necessary. I apologize. Go ahead.
Uh, so I'm here to represent the McCall Behavioral Health Network and the president and CEO Maria Koutan Skinner is also here and I'll ask her to say a couple of words in in a couple of minutes here. But we're, we really have a very simple request. We just want you to add the letter E to the table of uses, uh, section three point one subsection one point eight three to the L B local business zone. For the life of me, I remember us making changes way back when on group care facilities. And I don't remember us for having any specific reason not allowing that uh, seven to twelve residents in the local business zone because we allow more than twelve residents. And of course, by statute, we have to allow six or fewer. So um, I've had an opportunity, oh, maybe I should read just for the public what the definition of a group care facility is. It's a residential facility which provides services to seven or more unrelated individuals who are handicapped, aged, disabled, in need of supervision or undergoing rehabilitation. This includes but is not limited to facilities licensed by the federal or state governments such as group homes, halfway houses and orphanages. It does not include a residential facility for mentally ill adults in any zone that allows two family uses. Uh, and we made that change back in, looks like June twenty-fourth of uh, two thousand when we we put that uh, definition into the regulations. Uh, I have reviewed a very fine memo that Jeremy Leifert wrote to you regarding this proposal. I had the opportunity to meet with Jeremy. We looked at the plan of conservation and development. And I'm in agreement, although it doesn't specifically mention this type of a group home. It does clearly talk about um, a variety of housing types based on varying housing needs in the community. And I've asked um, Maria to come forward and just tell you a few words with her professional opinion as to why we feel that this size in particular, seven to eleven residents in a group home is so important.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marty. Nice to see you all. Um, I'm Maria Koutant Skinner. I'm a licensed clinical social worker and president and CEO of McCall Behavioral Health Network. And I have worked at McCall as a social worker for twenty-five years and have been the leader for the last ten. We have uh, seen uh, many different iterations of care. And so for this particular application, looking at best practices as it relates to size of group care facility, what we've seen is that um, there's a particular level of attention and um, and healing that can happen um, when you have one of those intermediate sized programs. So I think I I have two points to make. One is quality of care and making an argument and and explaining the rationale for that size. The other is to talk about what kind of a neighbor a group care facility can be. So um, I think we have other facilities in the city that have numbers of that size and we have seen excellent outcomes. There's a lot of state regulations and federal regulations that dictate uh, the type of services and number of hours and even staff to patient ratio for different sized programs. This is one that we have seen um, because it is staffed twenty-four seven um, can deliver a very high quality of care and see exceptionally good outcomes. It allows for people to be able to heal and recover in a very safe and comfortable environment. As far as being a good neighbor, we also have a long history, um, over forty years in the city of Torrington of operating programs in local business zones and other similar areas. And uh, take great care of our facilities to make sure that they are beautifully maintained. Um, that they are respectful both to the uh, clients who are residing there as well as our neighbors. And we really take great pride in making sure that we are part of the community and part of the neighborhood. Um, and we're even part of different neighborhood watches where we have programs. So uh, for those two reasons, um, we are are hopeful that uh, you'll be able to see fit to make that amendment. Thank you.
Thanks.
I just want to clarify too. You may have seen in the newspaper uh, Senator Blumenthal was in the area. He has given a grant to McCall uh, for a group care home of of a size from seven to twelve. And they have an excellent location that's been picked out. Um, and if you're uh, if you do make the change to this, to the text amendment, um, we will be coming forward with an application. Once again, it'll be a special exception. So the special exception allows you to review the site, make sure it's appropriate, has the appropriate parking, appropriate screening. Um, and we um, will pursue that should you change the zoning tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Any commissioners have any comments or questions? Anybody on Zoom?
All good.
Great. Just a comment, Maria, being the good neighbor. Kudos because in all my years here, I've never heard anything negative about your organization. Thank you for what you're doing for the community. With no input from commissioners, I will go to the public. Would anyone like to speak in favor of this application? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record. And that also constitutes anyone on Zoom, please. Being none, would anyone like to speak in opposition of this application? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record. That includes people on Zoom.
Yep, okay. Uh, McCall Behavioral Health Health Network has filed an application to amend the text of the zoning regulations in the table of uses section three point one subsection one point eight three to allow group care facilities with seven to twelve residents in the local business zone by special exception approval. The regulations currently allow for group care facilities in the local business zone with greater than twelve residents, but do not currently allow for those for those of seven to twelve residents. I have reviewed past Torrington zoning regulations dating back to nineteen eighty-nine regarding group care facilities. The nineteen eighty-nine regulations allowed group care facilities of any number of residents by special special exception in most residential zones only. The current regulations were adopted prior to two thousand and three and remain unchanged from two thousand and three to present. State law mandates that group care homes of six or less residents be treated the same for permitting purposes as a single family dwelling. The law allows for reasonable local zoning controls of group care facilities with seven or more residents. No comments or concerns from city staff or departments were received for this proposed zone change. The Northwest Hills Council of Governments was sent notice of this proposed regulation amendment on July eleventh, twenty twenty-three, meeting the statutory thirty-five day notice requirement. No comments were received in response. The Connecticut general statutes requires the commission, when making a decision on a zone change, taking into consideration the plan of conservation and development. Prepared pursuant to the Connecticut general statute section eight dash three. The P O C D is largely silent on the topic of group care facilities largely focused on senior housing. However, the proposed amendments are generally supported by the P O C D section eight, which encourages a variety of housing types based uh, a variety of housing types based of varying housing needs in the community. This regulation amendment furthers the goals of the plan by providing for additional housing options for those in need of specialized care. Since the local regulations currently allow for group care facilities of twelve or more residents in the local business zone, I support approving the proposed regulation amendment to allow for the less intense use of group care facilities of seven to twelve residents by special exception in local business. The amendment would simply add an E to the zoning table in the appropriate location to allow for the use by special exception. I have attached the proposed change to the zoning use table in section three point one and the state law governing group care facilities, community residences in statutes.
Thank you, Jeremy. Any commissioners have any comments?
No.
I do not.
Does he, Donovan, do you have something?
I do not.
Okay, thank you. Just a quick question in that I know this may be a little premature. You you did mention you have staff typically twenty-four seven. How much staff per uh, quantity of? Okay, very good.
Just for the, just to get that on the microphone. It it, you said minimum of two at all times. Okay.
Does the applicant have anything else to add?
No, Mister Chairman.
Alright, thank you, Mister Connor. The time is seven fifteen. I declare this public hearing closed. We'll make a decision.
Right now. I'd like to make a motion to approve the proposed change of zoning regulation. The applicant McCall Behavioral Health Network. Proposal revise section three point one table of uses subsection one point eight three to allow a group care facility with seven to twelve residents by special exception in the local business zone.
I have a motion to have a second.
Diane Carroll seconds.
Thank you Diane. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Proposed, so moved. Good luck. Thank you. Alright, moving on to agenda item number four B, the time is seven fifteen, special exception twenty-three dash zero four, and site plan fourteen fifty-eight. Applicant David Wellzick Quality Barnes and Sheds LLC, location Winston Road, assessor map two thirty-eight block zero zero two lot zero zero six. Proposal display and sales of outdoor structures. Serving on the commission this evening is Donovan Riley, Tom Tellman, Diane Carroll. We're serving remotely. My uh, Greg Peresino, myself Greg Mealy also in attendance is our city planner Jeremy Leifert. Commissioner Peresino, do you have a legal notice, please?
It's uh, City of Torrington Planning and Zoning Commission legal notice. The Planning and Zoning Commission has scheduled a public hearing on the following application on Wednesday, August sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, beginning at following, excuse me, the first meeting at seven P M in the City Hall Auditorium, room two eighteen one forty Main Street, Torrington, Connecticut. Uh, special exception twenty-three dash oh four and site plan fourteen fifty-eight. Applicant Dave, David Wellzinnick. Hope I said that right. Quality Barnes and Sheds LLC, location Winston Road, assessors map two thirty-eight block zero zero two lot zero zero six. Proposal display and sales of outdoor structures. Time of hearing, as I said, immediately following the close of the first public hearing. Copies of the above member mentioned plans and applications are on file in the land use office, City Hall, one forty Main Street, Torrington, Connecticut. Greg Mealy Chair, Planning and Zoning Commission dated in Torrington, Connecticut, second day of August, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you. Is the applicant in attendance, please?
Yes, sir. May I proceed?
Name and address for the record, please.
Yes, my name is David Batista. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of Connecticut. I am employed by Haley Ward Engineering in Winston, Connecticut at one forty Willow Street. And I'm here tonight representing the applicant in this matter. Uh, the applicant, Mister David Wellzick, is here with me this evening if you have any questions of him. Um, I'd like to turn in my certified mailing receipts.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. There was a sign posted. Thank you.
Uh, Mister Chairman, the sign was posted August four, I believe. Is that correct? Yes, August four and the certified mailings went out August third. Um, I've also submitted a copy of a sample letter that we sent out to the neighbors and um, a list of, a full list of the adjourners that received letters. Uh, tonight we're here to discuss site plan, uh, special exception twenty-three zero four and site plan one four five eight. Um, these relate to the display and sale of outdoor structures on Winston Road. There's no street number on this property, but it's listed by the assessor as uh, map two thirty-eight block zero zero two lot zero zero six. Uh, we filed applications for site plan approval, special exception for the proposed use and a floodplain permit. I'm not sure if the floodplain permit comes into play at this hearing or not. Uh, I can discuss, I will discuss it. I have a question for the city planner. Is, can you share my drawings? Are those available tonight?
I I would need them, I would need them electronically unless you can log, unless you, there's a way for you to log into the meeting or into Zoom.
I I don't have that ability here. I submitted electronic drawings to um, the assistant planner.
Okay.
Earlier in the week.
But go get them if we want to.
If if you need them, I can talk from memory.
Up to you. I mean, we could. Yeah, we could. Uh, you you can go ahead and just review. I'll I'll be, I'll I'll grab and be right.
Okay, um, do the uh, members have the plans in front of them?
Yes.
Correct. Okay, um, on the cover sheet in the upper right-hand corner is a location map. The subject property is shown thereon. Uh, it's on the westerly side of Winston Road, uh, State Route eight eight hundred. And it's located between Harris Drive and um, Machuga Road. Sort of opposite, right in between those two intersections, but on the westerly side. Um, when on, I call your attention to the two general notes that are at the bottom of the plans. On the first sheet, uh, note number seven. Uh, there's no sewer, water, electric, gas, or telecommunications utility proposed uh, within the lease lines on lot B. That's where we're going, we're proposing to develop. So this is a use um, with no utilities. It's simply an outdoor sales area. Um, similar to the farm stand application I saw here a month ago. There uh, uh, note number eight. Um, it says that a portion of lot B will be leased by David Wellzick. Located within a regulatory floodplain is designated as zone A six. According to FEMA's flood insurance study for Torrington, Still River flood profile twenty-five P shows the one hundred year base flood water surface elevation at seven hundred and twenty-nine point two feet. That's based on a National Geodetic Vertical Datum of nineteen twenty-nine. So there is a floodplain on the property and there will be no utilities. Moving on to the second page of the plan set, uh, we show a class A two boundary survey, which is a requirement of the um, site plan regulations. And um, on that plan, you will see an easement straddling the line between lots A and B. Um, the both lots are owned by the same party right now, N J Y Auto LLC. Um, but there's a common driveway proposed on that line and whoever the owners are in the future of lots A and B, they will enjoy um, easements across each other's property for access on that common driveway. Moving on to the third sheet, which is our site plan. Um, we have um, we show, actually show both properties, lot A and lot B on this drawing. On the left side is lot A. Uh, that is an existing manufacturing slash commercial industrial building at twenty-one seventy-seven Winston Road. And this commission in twenty twenty approved a site plan for that property. And I uh, traced the major features of that site plan, namely driveways and parking in red on this drawing. So you can see in context how our project will relate to something that you've already approved. In the middle of the drawing, you'll see a common driveway that straddles the the common boundary line between lots A and B. And um, as part of uh, the site plan approval for lot A, that permittee had to go get a uh, D O T encroachment permit to construct the driveway apron on uh, Winston Road. He did receive that driveway permit and uh, recently renewed it so that it's good for another year. And uh, what we're proposing to do is share that common driveway and develop the right side of the drawing in front of you, which is uh, shown pretty much in color. Uh, the darkest gray um, hatch patterns on this drawing denote a gravel uh, processed aggregator, processed gravel driveway. So we're going to extend the paved apron coming off Winston Road in a westerly direction to go by our driveway that goes into the site on a north-south basis uh, so that my client can um, drive his truck and trailer up a little bit and then turn the corner back and drop off his inventory. We'll talk about that in a minute. The lighter gray hatching that you see there on either side of the dark gray access aisle is uh, proposed as crushed stone. Um, several inches of of clean crushed stone and it's on these surfaces that Mister Wellzick will place um, his outdoor uh, storage sheds. These are the typical type of shed that you see for sale at Clotter Farm and other places. Eight by ten, twelve by sixteen, et cetera. And he plans to have approximately a dozen there for sale. Um, lined up on both sides of the driveway aisle. Uh, one side of the um, crushed stone aprons is wider than the other. The larger sheds would likely be placed on on the westerly side where there's more room and the smaller sheds would be placed on the easterly side where there's less room. Uh, this site is uh, very flat. It was an area that was excavated prior to our involvement in the project. Um, unfortunately, whoever did the excavation mined it down a little bit too far below the floodplain. And I show on this plan a blue line that outlines the floodplain elevation of seven twenty-nine point two. And that goes um, around um, it 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 runs north-south out in the state right-of-way and then it kind of hugs the uh, the developed area or surrounds it uh, that we're proposing. So everything we're doing is inside of a floodplain is essentially. Um, at the northerly end, which is on your right of the site, site development that we're proposing, you'll see a blue area. That is a proposed pavement, hot mix asphalt pavement area. And inside of that will be a uh, van accessible handicap parking stall and uh, striped uh, no park zone associated with that and uh, an access way, an accessible paved walk up to a landing that will go into a storage shed, which is shown in the lower right-hand corner. That is twelve by sixteen and uh, the applicant plans to use that storage shed as an office. Um, the city and just to the west of that, there's a little black box that's a little bit difficult to see. But that will be a um, ADA accessible portable toilet. And the city staff uh, recommended that we keep the office storage shed and the portable toilet above the floodplain elevation. So we tucked it way up at the north end of the site where we have a little bit of room to work with outside of the floodplain. Uh, the green area that you see surrounding the um, um, gravel areas is um, slope work that was exposed when the site was lowered. And uh, the city engineer asked us to stabilize those slopes. Much of it is solid rock, but not all of it. There are pockets of sand and gravel in between ledge out crops that we would have to grade and seed over. So not everything you see in green will have to be seeded, but that's the general area where these pockets of sand and gravel exist. Some of them are excuse me, some of them are are a bit steep and need to be flattened a little bit and then seeded. Uh, we have a proposed freestanding sign on this project. It is immediately adjacent to the right side of the driveway coming in in its shape like a V. And I um, if we move to the uh, third page, I can show you some details. Um, in the middle of the detailed drawing. I can't seem to control the cursor, uh, Jeremy, to get to the fourth or the third sheet, sheet three of three. Okay. I can see if my plan up in full.
Site plan.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
Which all on our screens here.
And can the people that are logged in remotely see the, see the plan?
Yes.
We're, we're good. Perfect. Okay, they're just not up there.
Okay, um, so I cannot seem to operate or have control of the
Uh, where do you, oh, sorry, which, where did you?
I I just wanted to go to the detail sheet. I'll talk about that briefly, then we'll go back to the uh, yeah. And if you could shrink that a little bit. So that should be good. Okay, so uh, right in the middle of the sheet, you'll see a detail for the sign. On the left is a plan view showing the V shape. And on the right is an elevation view showing you basically what the sign would look like. Um, the sign is, the state right-of-way is so wide in this location that the sign is forced to be quite a distance from the road. And based on the traffic speed and the angle that people will be able to view this, um, I rather doubt that the um, a sign that was say perpendicular to the road would be very visible. So we decided to make a V-shaped sign. We went back and forth uh, with the city staff and concluded that we could have up to seventeen and a half square feet. Up to seventeen and a half square feet of sign face on each side of that V. Um, without violating the zoning regulations. So what we've proposed is a simple four-by-four sign. Freestanding on each side of the V, which would be sixteen square feet on either side. Um, thirty-two square feet total. The maximum allowed is thirty-five.
Go back to the.
Site plan, please. And I think this will be okay. Uh. I just wanted to talk a little bit about traffic. Uh, we do not expect this to be a high-volume traffic generator. Um, the. Applicant expects perhaps. A dozen cars on a busy Saturday coming in to look at sheds. Uh, which is a very low number. Uh, we don't have traffic counts, uh, for. A site like this. It's a sort of a unique little small display area. Uh, but. Um, much of the time. He will not be there. Um, his sign has a phone number on it, will have a phone number on it. And people can call him and make an appointment and he'll meet them down there and show them some sheds. Perhaps on Saturdays or Sundays, um, he might staff the shed with a person. Um, is that true Dave? Okay, and, um. So there'd be one worker there waiting for customers to show up. And, uh, we, as I said, we don't expect a, a high volume of traffic. Uh, we've. Made several revisions to this plan since the original submission, uh, in response to town comments. Essentially, we've addressed everything, um, that the city planner and assistant city planner have asked us to do. Except for, uh, I forgot to show a trailer. On the property. There's a. Um, sort of a used. Construction site office trailer. Uh, parked up against the hillside, uh, at the toe of the slope. Um, and the, the staff asked us to remove that and I forgot to put that on this addition of the site plan. So that's something I will add. Uh, when we get around to making our final revisions. Uh, the city engineer brought up concerns about drainage. Um, as you're probably all aware. There's a very steep and long hillside to the west of the site. And during rainfall like we've been having this summer. Um, you can get runoff coming down. That site, that mountain, and it will come into the bottom of our little. Uh, gravel area here, which is essentially like a bowl. With an opening at the south end. And it flows out, um. Near the southwestern corner or the lower left corner. Southeastern corner, I'm sorry, lower left corner of the site onto the state right of way. That's what's happening now and, uh, the city engineer was concerned that. Um, the amount of runoff that could potentially be expected here could. Cause some movement of the crushed stone or erosion or whatever. And he asked me to look into drainage and I've come up with several options that I want to look at, but. All of them involve the DOT because. If I'm going to catch the water before it gets to. Uh, the developed portions of the site. I have to put it somewhere and the logical place would be in the state right of way. And, um, anybody that wants to do work in the state right of way would have to. Get an encroachment permit for that work. I've placed, uh, two calls to the DOT in the last week after the city. Uh, gave me these comments and. They haven't responded to my call yet. So that issue is open. Uh, we're amenable to, um, conditions of approval. Uh, stating that we meet, need to satisfy the city engineer's comments, um. If the commission is so inclined. But in one way or another, I'll have to handle the, the runoff. And get it safely from the west side to the east side of our property and then on to the state right of way. In a manner that's acceptable to the city engineer and to DOT. Uh, the city engineer also asked for some type of assurance, even if it was an email or simple assurance. That they were on board with what we want to do. Uh, we don't get the encroachment permit. Um, the applicant doesn't get that. It's. Granted to the contractor who would actually do the work. So, um, the city engineer said he would be satisfied if we could get some kind of a letter from DOT saying that they were. Accepting what I was proposing. So that is in progress. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
The sheds themselves, nothing is being constructed on site, correct? Everything is just brought in, completed.
Correct. These are, um, prefabricated, pre-manufactured buildings. Um, and they're fully assembled when they get to the site.
And back to the site, no electric at all?
Nothing. No, the business hours would be the daylight hours presumably, uh, no activity at night.
Okay, very good, thank you. You want to dive into your memo before I? Jump around here.
Dave Walesik of Quality Barnes and Sheds has submitted an application for property located on Winston Road Assessor's Map two thirty-eight. Block zero zero two, lot zero zero six. For property improvements and operation of a short, a storage shed sales business on the property. Including storage of shed inventory on the property and a small office shed. The property is owned by Nedzat Dubrova, DBA NJY Auto LLC. Is nine point five-three acres in area and is located in an industrial zone. The proposed shed storage and sales use is a lot, is in allowed use in the I industrial zone. By special exception under zoning regulation section three point one. Table of permitted uses subsection three point zero five. Sales and rental of goods outside storage allowed. A site plan has been submitted with the special exception application titled. Site plan disp- display and sales of outdoor structures. Prepared for Dave Walesik, Quality Barnes and Sheds LLC. By Haley Ward Engineering, Winston, Connecticut. Revised to July fifth, twenty twenty-three. We have a, we do have a new revision there, uh, four sheets. Staff has communicated previously with the property owner, applicant and engineer prior to submission of this application. Other items of note, although the property line is a significant distance, fifty-plus feet. Back from the curb line of Winston Road, no product display is allowed in the required ten-foot front yard setback. A landscape buffer is required within this ten-foot area. Per comments from assistant planner Nate Nardi Cyrus on July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three. This buffer area may be grass only. Per comments from assistant city planner, the proposed sign on she- site shall be revised to meet city regulations. Three, it is assumed that there will be a minute, be minimal traffic generation from the site. The applicant should be prepared to address anticipated traffic flow for the commission at the public hearing. Four, details on the gravel drive from Winston Road are required to be included on the submitted plans. As it, as it is the primary access to the site. All exposed, uh, five, all exposed excavated steep slopes shall be permanently stabilized before operating on site. Meth- methods for permanent stabilization of steep slopes shall be submitted by the applicant in the proposed plans. Other staff comments, economic development. Rista Malanka, AICP, Torrington Economic Development Director has not submitted comment, comments on this application. Assistant Planner Nate Nardi Cyrus, Assistant City Planner, submitted the following comments to the city planner. On July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three. Uh, general, the storage tra- trailer currently straddling the property line must be shown on sheet one and moved off the property when. Zoning floodplain permits are issued. Wetlands, there are no regulated wetlands or watercourses on or in the vicinity of the subject property. That would require wetlands review for this proposal. Therefore, no wetlands, no wetlands permits are required prior to this application. This constitutes a favorable wetlands report for this application. Floodplains, much of the site is within the regulated one hundred-year floodplain. So a floodplain application was filed concurrently with the special exception application. The proposed site plan is consistent with the city's flood hazard regulations, section seven point two. Landscaping, no additional landscaping plan is required for this application. Lighting, no lighting is shown on the site plan. New lighting must comply with section five point one seven of the city zoning code. Including the use of full cutoff fixtures. We encourage the use of products approved by the International Dark Sky Association. Signage, section five point one five of the zoning regulations. Permits the application to install a freestanding sign in the location shown on the site plan. The eight-foot height of the signs is shown on the, shown on the plan is the maximum height. For freestanding signs in the industrial zone. However, the maximum square footage of a sign is thirty-five square feet. Proposed design is V-shaped with two thirty-two square foot panels. That total is sixty-four square feet of sign area. The two signs must either be shrunk to seventeen point five square feet each. Or combined into one thirty-two square foot sign with a front and back. Conservation, this application was not referred to the conservation commission for review. Architectural Review Committee, this application was not referred to the ARC for comment. Torrington Area Health District, TAHD, offered no comments on the plans. Engineering, Paul Kunsen, city engineer, in an email to the city planner dated August third, twenty twenty-three. Submitted a set of comments on the submitted plans to be addressed by the applicant. See attached. Fire, Fire Marshal Edward Becetta submitted comments. On the application to the city planner dated July eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. Regarding lock boxes and fire suppression system requirements, see attached. Building official Kevin Gillette, WPCA Administrative Assistant Sheriff Lewis. And Police Traffic Sergeant Dustin Baldus stated in emails to the city planner. That their respective departments have no comments or concerns on the application. Conclusion, I recommend approval of special exception twenty-three dash zero four. And site plan fourteen fifty-eight, Winston Road, MBL two three eight, zero zero two, zero zero six. For display and sales of storage sheds with outdoor storage and display. With the following conditions and recommendations. One, the applicant shall not place any product for display or any parking in the ten-foot front yard setback area. The area along the front property boundary on the southern end of the property. In view of the public roadway shall be a grassed area in the ten-foot front yard setback. Two, details on the gravel entrance, drive materials and construction shall be included on the final plans for filing. Three, details on steep slope stabilization shall be included in the final plans to the satisfaction of the city engineer. Four, the applicant shall follow comments of Nate Nardi Cyrus. Assistant Planner outlined in his July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three email to the city planner. Including removal of the trailer on site, modifications to signage on the property and the approval of flood, floodplain permitting. Five, the applicant shall make plan corrections based on the comments and plan markups from Paul Kunsen, city engineer. Outlined in his August third, twenty twenty-three email to the city planner. Six, the applicant shall follow the recommendations of Fire Marshal Edward Becetta. In his July eighteenth, twenty twenty-three email to the city planner. Regarding lock boxes and fire suppression systems. Seven, the planning and zoning commission finds that the proposed use, location and site design. Is compatible with the neighborhood and surrounding uses. And is protective of the health, safety and welfare of the citizens of the city of Torrington. Eight, zoning permits and floodplain permits are required prior to alteration or use of the site for the proposed use. Nine, in accordance with section eight point four point three and eight point four point six of the zoning regulations. The following shall be submitted to the city planner. A, two paper copies of the full approved plan set, including the engineer's stamp and chairman's signature box on the title page. B, one Mylar copy of the site plan sheet for filing with the city clerk. In accordance with section eight point four point three point P of the zoning regulations. The Mylar sheet shall bear a chairman's signature box, a copy of the approval letter from the commission, an engineer's seal and live ink stamp. C, Mylar sheets shall be filed by the applicant with the city clerk after signature of the chairman and prior to the approval of zoning. And floodplain permits to begin construction or use of the site.
Thank you, Jeremy. At any point, was it discussed with engineering that have an actual address assigned to this? A number?
There was not, but I, I kind of thought the same thing. They probably, since there's a use on the property, they should assign a.
Right, I mean, fire and, uh, police protection, so forth, or even, you know, hey, we're at one, two, three Winston Road.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll have a conversation with, uh, with engineering.
Right.
Yeah.
I think it'd be prudent.
Yep.
Any commissioners have any comments or questions before we go to the public?
No.
I do not.
Anybody? Okay, me.
Yeah, go ahead.
All right, um. So, you know, you're not going to have heavy parking requirements, because you're going to have some parking requirements, because people are going to come outside to look at the property. And I'm assuming, looking at this, uh, one. That the driveway kind of area, it goes down through the site. And there'll be sheds on both sides of that driveway. Is going to be considered the area that people would park in. Is that correct?
Well, we have, uh, the handicap parking space, which will be paved and one additional space. Next to it for general parking. Um, if there's somebody working there, they can park. To the left of that. Um, so there's room for one or two cars comfortably, plus a handicap spot.
Right.
And if, let's say there's two cars there, two sets of husbands and wives looking at sheds and a third one comes. They can park somewhere in that driveway. Um, you know, and then whoever's kind of locked into the north end of that site can just drive around them.
What's the width of that?
The twenty-four feet.
Huh?
Twenty-four feet that aisle.
That's the, that's the required for two-way travel in our regs.
Yep. All right.
So these units that are going to be sold right there, you know, say there's twelve units. Mister, Mrs. Smith picked unit number one. That'll be delivered. Picked up and delivered. During normal business hours or, or that's. Probably an early morning scenario, get it loaded and get it moved. Okay. All right, very good. Any other commissioners have any comments?
No.
I'm doing it right now. Would anyone like? To speak in favor of this application? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record. That includes people on Zoom, please. Being none, would anyone like to speak in opposition of this application? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Anyone on Zoom? Does, does the applicant have anything else to add or comment on?
Uh, no, Mr. Chairman, other than, uh, my offer and my pledge to, um, satisfy all the comments. Um, in response to whatever conditions you impose if you do, do decide to approve it.
Thank you, sir. At the time of seven forty-seven, I declare this public hearing closed. Make a decision as soon as Commissioner Percy and I read it.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve special exception twenty-three dash oh four. And site plan fourteen fifty-eight, applicant. David Wazlick. Quality Barnes and Sheds LLC, location Winston Road Assessor's Map two thirty-eight, block zero zero two. Lot zero zero six. Proposal, just glance sales of outdoor structures. With the following conditions and recommendations. Number one, the applicant shall not place any product for display or any parking in the ten-foot. Foot front yard setback area. Area along the front property boundary on the southern end of the property in view of the public roadway. There'll be a grassed area in a ten-foot front yard setback. Two, details on the gravel entrance, drive materials and construction shall be included in the final plans for filing. Three, details on steep slope stabilization shall be required or included. In the final plans to the satisfaction of the city engineer. Four, the applicant shall follow comments of Nate Narly Silas. Assistant Planner outlined in his July twenty-third, twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three email. To the city planner, including the removal of the trailer on site. Modifications to the signage on the property and the approval of floodplain permitting. Five, the applicant shall make. Plan corrections based on comments and plan markups from Paul, Paul Hunden's. City engineer outlined in his August third, twenty twenty-three email to the city planner. Six, the applicant shall follow the recommendations of Fire Marshal Edward Becetta. In his July eighteen, twenty twenty-three email to the city planner regarding lock boxes. And fire suppression systems. Seven, planning and zoning commission finds that the proposed use, location and site. Design is compatible with the neighborhood and surrounding uses and is protective of the health and safety and welfare of the citizens of. The city of Torrington. Eight, zoning permits and floodplain permits are required prior to alteration. Or use of the site for the proposed use. Nine, in accordance with the sections. Eight point four point three and eight point four point six of the zoning regulations. The filing shall be submitted to the city planner. A, two paper copies of the full approved plan set, including the engineer's stamp. And chairman's signature box on the title page. B. One Mylar copy of site plan sheet for filing with the city clerk in accordance with sections eight point four point three P. The zoning regulations. The Mylar sheet shall bear the chairman's signature box, a copy of the approved letter from the commission. And engineer's seal and live ink stamp. C, Mylar sheet shall be filed by the applicant with the city clerk. After the signatures with chairman and, and the prior. To the, and prior to the approval of the zoning and floodplain permits to begin construction. Or use of the. to the and prior to the approval of the zoning and floodplain permits to begin construction or use of the site.
I have a motion.
Yep.
Second.
I second it, Donovan Riley.
Thank you, Donovan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Good luck, sir. Moving out to agenda item number five, old business, we have none. Moving out to agenda item number six, new business. A, Site Plan fourteen sixty-two, applicant O N G Industries, Inc., location twenty-eight dash thirty-four Wall Street and twenty-eight Plain Street. Proposal, repaired damaged parking area, including new drainage structure, repaving and striping of lot with the creation of additional parking and revised one-way traffic flow from Wall Street to Plain Street. Is the applicant in attendance?
Yes, sir. Richard Warren here on behalf of O N G Industries. It's a fairly straightforward application. The plans that were submitted through Harica Associates show the revision of the parking lot that is in disrepair. It's an existing paved area. We would like to repave, and we are looking to make it one-way traffic leading from Wall Street and exiting out onto Plain Street. We did submit a letter. I can provide an original copy of the letter allowing drainage from one property to the other if you need a do I need to submit another letter? We've also provided in this this existing use is is in place at the moment. However, there is an area of the property that we took on when we purchased the property, not realizing that there was city property as part of the existing parking. So we have now generated an easement that has been submitted to the city for use of that that area that is a part of the city property for the parking lot as it currently exists, and an easement for maintenance of that and access for the city for any drainage needs that are along the east branch of the Nogatuck River. Part of the application also includes repair of the damage where there had been some overflow drainage from the parking area. And then because there is a low spot in the parking area, we are we're proposing installing catch basin with drainage that will run to Plain Street. So all of this complies with existing or existing operations in the site and then complies with the zoning requirements. There were notations and comments made from engineering and from the city. We have received a wetlands approval, and the latest revision to the to the plans did address signage requirements. They are noted on the on the the new plans that there would be.
So again, we can see them here. You just can't see them there.
Oh, okay, okay. So so there is one-way signage on the Wall Street entrance, one one exit-only signage on Plain Street. So that's that's been addressed. In addition, the engineer has also supplied information about curbing around the the proposed planting area and included the typical planting type in as requested by Assistant City Planner. I would like to.
Thank you.
And I believe that that is all that I believe I need to present to you. If you have any questions, I'm available to answer them. If there's something I have not put forward, let me know.
Any Commissioners have any questions?
I've got I've got one. I've got one one quick question. So is the access or has it changed onto Wall Street? Or it it's the same as it is now?
Right now, access is both in and out out through the Wall Street curb cut there. So we're proposing that to be in entrance only.
Okay.
There is not currently an exit onto Plain Street that the we own the adjacent lot, but there is not a paved exit way that way.
Okay, so if anything, that would that would make it that would make it safer onto the onto Wall Street or off of Wall Street.
That is our belief, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
No.
Okay. O N G Industries has filed an application for property at twenty-eight Wall Street, thirty-four Wall Street, and twenty-eight Plain Street, tax assessors map one seventeen, block zero one nine, lots zero zero one, zero zero two, and zero zero three, for improvements to the existing parking lot, revised one-way traffic flow, installation of a new storm of new storm sewer infrastructure and erosion controls. The properties are owned by O N G Industries, are zero point one two, zero point one three, and zero point one six acres in area respectively, and are all located in the L B local business zone. The current uses of the properties are as a two-family dwelling, twenty-eight Plain Street, a parking lot, twenty-eight Wall Street, and a commercial building, thirty-four Wall Street. There are no proposed changes to the existing uses on the property as part of this application, and existing uses are all compliant uses in the L B zone. This application proposes the following modifications to the site. One, change the two-way entrance exit on Wall Street to an entrance only from Wall Street and a driveway extension through twenty-eight Plain Street and a one-way exit onto Plain Street. Two, installation of a of a new stormwater basin on the eastern side of twenty-eight Plain Street to connect to existing stormwater infrastructure at Plain Street. And three, repairs and installation of riprap to stabilize river embankment. Plans submitted are titled Parking Lot Expansion Plan Sheet C one and Erosion and Sediment Control Plan Sheet C two, prepared for O N G Industries, Wall and Plain Street, Torrington, Connecticut, by Rica Associates LLC, Litchfield, Connecticut, revised to eight, ten, twenty-three, two sheets. There are no previous applications on file for these properties. Staff staff has met previously with the applicant and their representatives to discuss the project prior to this meeting. Other items of note, one, a triangular piece of the parking lot along the eastern edge of the property is a historic encroachment into town land into 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 town land, into land owned by the city, going back many years under the previous property ownership. An easement agreement with the city is in the process of being drafted to allow for continued use of this piece. Two, there are no notes on signage for the one-way entrance or exits for the driveway. Location and details for typical signage should be located on the plans. Other other staff comments. Nate Nardi Cyrus, Assistant City Planner, in an email to the City Planner dated July thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, and revised eight eleven twenty-three, offered the following comments on the plans. Wetlands, there is a regulated water course in the vicinity of the subject property that requires wetlands review for this proposal. The applicant submitted a wetland permit application on four twenty-seven twenty-three with the permit A D twenty-three oh four oh eight issued on that is not supposed to say ten six. I think that's six ten twenty-three. An application to modify this permit with the proposed plans was submitted July twenty-eighth and will be approved August twelfth. This constitutes a favorable wetlands report for this application. Landscaping, after review, after reviewing the revised site plan dated eight, ten, twenty twenty-three, the proposed landscaping plan complies with section five point one one of the Torrington zoning regulations. In the final plans, the applicant shall add a note that islands will be protected by curbing or other protective measures. Lighting, existing lighting on site complies with section five point one seven, except a spotlight on twenty-eight Plain Street, which shall be updated to a conforming lighting fixture. No additional lighting is shown on the site plan. New lighting must comply with section five point one seven of the city zoning code, including the use of full cutoff fixtures. We encourage the use of products approved by the International Dark Sky Association. Signage, there are no new signs proposed as part of this application. Assigned permit shall be required before installing any signage in accordance with section five point one five of the zoning regulations. Conservation, this application was not referred to the Conservation Commission for review. Economic Development, Rista Malanka, A I C P, Torrington Economic Development Director, verbally indicated her support for this site plan application. Architecture Review Committee, this application was not referred to the A R C for review and comment. Engineering, Paul Kunsen, City Engineer, in an email to the City Planner dated July twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three, submitted comments to be addressed by the applicant, see attached. Building official Kevin Gillette and Police Traffic Sergeant Dustin Baldus responded by email to the City Planner and stated that they have no comments on this application. The Fire Marshal's Office, W P C A, and Torrington Area Health District offered no comments on this application. Conclusion, I recommend approval of Site Plan number fourteen sixty-two, twenty-eight Wall Street, thirty-four Wall Street, and twenty-eight Plain Street for upgrades to the parking area, revised one-way traffic flow for a new driveway extension, installation of storm drainage, and upgraded erosion controls with the following conditions. One, a zoning permit approval is required prior to performing work on the property associated with this approval. Two, documentation of the executed easement for the triangle on the eastern edge of the property shall be submitted to the City Planner prior to issuance of zoning permits. Three, the applicant shall follow the requirements of Assistant City Planner Nate Nardi Cyrus, revised to an eight eleven twenty-three email to the City Planner. Details shall be added to the final plans on the type of curbing to be installed around the planning islands and a note added on the spotlight spotlight removal and replacement with a compliant fixture on the twenty-eight Plain Street property. Four, the applicant shall address any remaining comments from Paul Kunsen, City Engineer, in his August fourth, twenty twenty-three memo to the City Planner, including Army Corps of Engineer requirements prior to issuance of zoning permits. Five, the final plan shall show the location and design of typical one-way and do-not-enter signage at the entrance and exit of the one-way driveway. Six, in accordance with section eight point four point three and eight point four point six of the zoning regulations, the following shall be submitted to the City Planner. A, two paper copies of the full approved plans with corrections and including the engineer's stamp and chairman's signature box. B, one Mylar copy of Sheet C one of the final plans for filing with the City Clerk in accordance with section eight point four point three point P of the zoning regulations. Each Mylar sheet shall bear a chairman's signature box, a copy of the approval letter from the commission, an engineer's seal and a live ink stamp. C, Mylar sheets shall be filed by the applicant with the City Clerk after a signature of the chairman and prior to the approval of zoning permits to begin construction.
Thank you, Jeremy. Any Commissioners have any comments?
No.
Also.
Is the applicant also?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Great, great.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve Site Plan fourteen sixty-two, O N G Industries Incorporated is the applicant. Location is twenty-eight dash thirty-four Wall Street and twenty-eight Plain Street. Proposal is upgrades to parking area, revised one-way traffic flow and driveway, installation of storm drainage and erosion controls with the following conditions and recommendations. One, the zoning permit approval is required prior to performing work on the property associated with this approval. Two, documentation of the executed easement for the triangle on the eastern edge of the property shall be submitted to the City Planner prior to issuing a zoning permit. The app three, the applicant shall follow the requirements of Assistant City Planner Nate Nardi Silas, revised to an eight eleven twenty-three email to the City Planner. Details shall be added to the final plans on the type of curbing to be installed around the planting islands and a note added on the spotlight removal and replacement with a compliant fixture on the twenty-eight Plain Street property. Four, the applicant shall address any remaining comments from Paul Kunsen's City Engineer and his August fourth twenty twenty-three memo to the City Planner, including the A C O E requirements prior to issuing a zoning permit. Five, final plans shall show location and design of typical one-way and do-not-enter signage at the entrance and exit of the one-way driveway. Six, in accordance with sections eight point four point three and eight point four point six the zoning regulations, the filing shall be submitted to the City Planner. A, two paper copies of the full approved plans with corrections and including the engineer's stamp and chairman's signature box. B, one Mylar copy of Sheet C one of the final plans for filing with the City Clerk in accordance with the section eight point four point three point P of the zoning regulations. Each Mylar sheet shall bear a chairman's signature box, copy of the approved letter from the commission, an engineer's seal, and a live ink stamp. C, Mylar sheets shall be filed in the application by the application with the with the City Clerk after the signature of the chairman and prior to the approval of the zoning permits to be before being to begin construction.
I have a motion. I have a second.
Tom Tomlin, second.
Thank you, Tom. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, so moved. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to agenda item number six, B, Site Plan fourteen sixty-three, applicant K S B J Investments LLC, Jacob Baylor, location thirteen eighty-three Torrington Street. Proposal, convert existing two hundred and ninety-seven square foot structure to accessory dwelling unit. Is the applicant in attendance, please?
Yes. Hi, how are you?
Good. How are you? For the record, the applicant is on Zoom this evening. Please, please proceed, sir.
Good evening. I'm Jake. I'm a real estate investor and Realtor working with the properties at thirteen sixty-seven and thirteen eighty-three Torrington Street. I'm here to propose the conversion for an existing two hundred and ninety-seven square foot single-family residence at thirteen eighty-three Torrington Street into a guest house to accompany the main house at thirteen sixty-seven Torrington Street on one parcel. As part of this proposal, we'll be making the necessary modifications to one of the driveways at thirteen eighty-three Torrington Street, ensuring it no longer functions as a driveway. Additionally, we will be combining the deeds as part of this process, aligning with the requirements set by the lenders for the current sale. I believe these changes support our community by enhancing the neighborhood's visual appeal, maintaining property conformity, and optimizing land use. Thank you for your consideration, and if you have any questions, please ask.
Thank you, sir. Any Commissioners have any questions so far? Jeremy, why don't you dive into your memo, please?
Sure. Jacob Beeler, managing partner, K S B J Investments LLC, has filed an application for property at thirteen eighty-three Torrington Street, tax assessor map two four six, block zero zero two, lot zero six one, to change the use of an existing small, single-family dwelling to an accessory dwelling unit, A D U, for the purposes of combining the property with an adjacent parcel under common ownership containing a separate, single-family dwelling. The property is owned by K S B J Investments LLC, is zero point two four acres in area and is located in the R fifteen S residential zone. There are no historic permitting files in the land use office for this property. The single-family home was built in nineteen forty-nine prior to zoning in Torrington and was extensively remodeled in twenty twenty through twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. It is the intent of the owner, if approved for this zone change, to combine this property with adjacent property under common ownership containing a single-family dwelling at thirteen sixty-seven Torrington Street. The use and conversion of the building, when combined with the adjacent property, is an allowed use in the R fifteen S residential zone under Torrington Regulations, zoning regulations, section three point one, table of uses, subsection one point two five, accessory apartment, and the requirements of section five point one of the regulations governing accessory apartments. A waiver request will be submitted to waive the submission of a site plan for the property as no exterior work is proposed. Staff has met previously with the applicant to discuss the details of the application prior to this meeting. Other items of note, one, the current single-family dwelling unit on this property is pre-existing non-conforming in terms of property setbacks and as it is only approximately ten feet from the rear property line and six feet from the side property line. The R fifteen S zone requires a fifty-foot rear yard setback and a fifteen-foot side yard setback for both single-family dwellings and detached accessory apartments. Due to the fact that the proposed use on the property is to remain the same or less intense as the existing use, the pre-existing non-conforming building location remains valid for the change to an accessory apartment in accordance with section five point one two of the zoning regulations. Two, the dwelling unit does does not meet the minimum size requirement of four hundred square feet for an accessory dwelling unit as is required in section five point one of the regulations. However, the unit meets the requirements for pre-existing non-conforming status as outlined in the previous item. Three, as a condition of approval, the commission should require that the that the properties at both thirteen eighty-three and thirteen sixty-seven Torrington Street are combined as the accessory apartment is intended to complement the existing home at thirteen sixty-seven Torrington Street. A deed showing the lot-line combination is required to be submitted to staff as a condition of the approval. The approval shall not be effective until documentation showing the merger is filed with the land use office. Other staff comments, Architecture Review Committee, this project was not referred to the A R C for comment. Engineering, Paul Kunsen, City Engineer, in a memorandum to the City Planner dated August seventh, twenty twenty-three, offered comments on the application to be addressed by the applicant regarding driveways and sightlines, see attached. W P C A, Cheryl Lewis, W P C A Administrative Assistant, sent the following comments to the City Planner by email on August third, twenty twenty-three. No comments for W P C A. We had a call about this property a few weeks ago from a real estate agent, and we found this property is not connected to the sewer. Assistant Planner Nate Nardi Cyrus stated that he has no comments on the application. This constitutes a favorable wetlands report as no wetlands permits are required for this project. No comments were received regarding this application from the Economic Development Director, Torrington Area Health District, Building Official, Police Traffic Department or Fire Marshal. Conclusion, I recommend approval of site plan application number fourteen sixty-three thirteen eighty-three Torringford Street for approval of a two hundred and ninety-seven square foot detached accessory apartment with the following conditions. One, the applicant shall provide documentation of property merger of the subject property with adjacent property at thirteen sixty-seven Torringford Street to the city planner. This approval shall not be in effect until merger is completed. Two, the commission finds that the reduced property line setback and undersized apartment net floor area are allowed as a continuation of a pre-existing legal non of of pre-existing legal non-conformities predating zoning in the city of Torrington. Three, the applicant shall follow the requirements of the engineering public works department regarding regarding driveways and sightlines. Violations of regulations or standards for driveways shall be a violation of this site plan approval.
Thank you, Jeremy. Uh, the applicant currently, is there for sale signs on those properties?
There are.
Intended to sell them individually or?
No, together.
Ideally as a package.
Yes, we're actually under contract to sell together right now.
Okay, thank you.
That's the problem we're facing right now is the lender is requiring them on one parcel.
Okay. Any commissioners have any questions or comments?
I I just have a couple of comments. I actually showed this property was active. So my question is the road. Uh, which is the dirt road off of Torringford Street. I'm assuming that there is an easement for once one of these neighbors to pass over, like who whose responsibility is that is that road?
That is the neighbors. If you're referring to the dirt driveway with the four parcels attached to that?
Yes.
Yes, that is the neighbor that is directly across from me. I don't recall his number right now, but.
So you so you have the right to pass over. It's needed and everything, okay. And um there is septic on that, right? And it's a shared septic?
Yeah, no, there are two separate septic systems.
Okay. And how about the wa- the well water?
There is a shared well.
Okay, okay.
Just for those two properties.
So when it, when the parcels are combined, neither of the, like the lender's not requiring that to have only one septic on the property, correct? Okay, and and they're okay with it having one well?
Yep.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Yeah, a quick, quick question. So this is not an application for a special exception, correct?
No, so we did, we amended the regulations based on changes to state statute two years ago, maybe a little, little less than two years ago. So all accessory apartments now are by site plan approval.
Okay.
We we used to have certain, certain accessory dwellings that that needed a special exception, but those were changed.
Thank you, Jim. Appreciate it.
Anyone else? Oh, go ahead, Greg.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve site plan modification fourteen sixty-three applicant Jacob Baylor. Doing business as KSBJ Investments. Proposal, conversion of a pre-existing two hundred and ninety-seven square foot single-family dwelling to an accessory dwelling unit. With the following conditions and recommendations. Yep, number one, the applicant shall provide documentation of property merger of the subject property with the adjacent property at thirteen sixty-seven Torringford Street to the city planner. This approval shall not be in effect until the merger is completed. Two, the commission finds that the reduced property line setbacks and undersized apartment net floor area are allowed as continuation of a pre-existing legal non-conforming predating zoning in the city of Torrington. Three, the applicant shall follow the requirements of the engineering public works department regarding driveways and sightlines. Violations of regulations or standards for driveway shall also be a violation of this site plan.
I have a motion, I have a second.
Second. Who's second?
Who was it?
Tom Tomlin.
Everybody at once.
Tom Tomlin, second. All those in favor?
Hi.
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 Opposed, so moved. Good luck. Moving on to the agenda item number six C, site plan fourteen sixty-five applicant T Morgan Matarra. Location thirty-five seventy Winston Road proposal, change of use to retail space, three hundred and ten square feet from office space.
Good evening. My name is Tapso Desai, and I'm representing the Santoshi LLC in San Sarah.
Okay.
Now we're just gonna change the living room for the manager's apartment into a little convenience store.
To a lot, I'm sorry.
A small convenience store.
Okay. Yep. So this is currently in one of the apartments or this is a separate space or?
Uh, it's the manager's apartment and uh, like check-in office.
Okay.
So just the bottom floor, like the first front area.
Okay. Library to your memo?
Uh, yeah.
Uh, T Morgan Matarra has filed an application for property at three five seven zero Winston Road. Tax Assessor's map two forty-two block zero zero two lot zero one zero to change the use of three hundred and of of a, I should say, three hundred and ten square foot portion of the existing motel office space to a retail use. The property is owned by Santoshi LLC, is zero point seven eight acres in area and is located in the local, the LB local business zone. There are no files for previous approvals in the land use office. Available information shows that the motel that the that the motel was approved and constructed in nineteen eighty-six and has been used as a motel since construction. The use of a portion of the property as a retail use is allowed by site plan approval in the LB local business zone under zoning regulations, section three point one, table of permitted uses, subsection three point one zero, retail stores. Plans submitted are titled Improvement Location Survey Prepared for Santoshi LLC, number thirty-five seventy Winston Road Route eight hundred, Torrington, Connecticut, by Timothy G Wiley Jr., Land Surveyor Barhamstead, Connecticut, dated July twenty twenty-three, one sheet. Staff has met previously with the applicant to discuss the details of the application prior to this meeting. Other items of note. One, according to the zoning table on the submitted plans, the parking on site meets the minimum parking requirements in the zoning regulations for the combined retail office and motel use on the site. Two, it appears that the handicap accessible parking space on the site is not marked or signed on the property. The applicant slash owner is required to mark the space and place the appropriate signage to comply with ADA regulations. Other staff comments. Nate Nardi Cyrus, Assistant City Planner, in an email to the city planner dated August fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, offered the following comments on the plans. Wetlands, there are no regulated wetlands or watercourses on or in the vicinity of the subject property that would require wetlands review for this proposal. Therefore, no wetlands permits are required prior to this application. This constitutes a favorable wetlands report for this application. Landscaping, no additional landscaping plan is required for this application. Lighting, no lighting is shown on the site plan. New lighting must comply with section five point one seven of the city zoning code, including the use of full cutoff fixtures. We encourage the use of products approved by the International Dark Sky Association. Signage, there are no new signs proposed as part of this application. A signed permit shall be required before installing any signage in accordance with section five point one five of the zoning regulations. Conservation, this application was not referred to the Conservation Commission for Review. Architectural Review Committee, this project was not referred to the ARC for comment. Fire, Fire Marshal Edward Becetta, in an email to the city planner dated August ninth, twenty twenty-three, indicated that he has no comments on this application. WPCA, in a memo memo to the city planner dated August eleventh, twenty twenty-three, Edward Tauzy, WPCA Administrator, submitted comments regarding sewer discharge permitting requirements, see attached. Economic Development Director Rista Malanka, City Engineer Paul Kunsens, Police Traffic Sergeant Dustin Baldus, staff from the Torrington Area Health District and Building Official Kevin Gillette offered no comments on this application. Conclusion, I recommend approval of site plan application number fourteen sixty-five thirty-five seventy Winston Road to change the use of a three hundred and ten foot square, three hundred and ten square foot portion of the existing motel office space to a retail use as indicated on the submitted plans with the following condition, conditions. One, it is recommended that the applicant follow the advice of this of Assistant City Planner Nate Nardi Cyrus in his, it should say, August fifteenth email to the city planner specifically regarding future lighting and signage. Two, the applicant shall follow the comments of Edward Tauzy, WPCA Administrator, in his August eleventh, twenty twenty-three email to the city planner regarding sewer discharge permitting. Three, the applicant shall be required to stripe and mark the handicap space on the site and place signage for the handicap space as required by law. August fifteen. Yep.
At one point, I believe there was a lot of outside storage on that site. Is that kind of cleared up behind the building there a bit?
Uh, yeah, we had a dumpster take old mattresses out um at the beginning of the summer.
Okay.
Uh, most of it should be cleared. They put up a fence for the neighbors, so it separates it now.
All right, very good, sir. Thank you. Any commissioners have any comments?
Yes, I do. It's Diane Carroll. Just curious what the proposed hours of operation are.
Uh, we haven't determined that yet. I mean, we would just do other people in the area, maybe around like uh ten, eleven o'clock. I'm not really sure um what the best practices are yet. Cause we just started with this, you know, after talking to Mr. Leffert.
And what types of, what types of items are going to be for sale?
Uh, prepackaged things from like the wholesale club and then um like New Britain Candy Factory and uh local distributors, you know, not like food or anything like that.
Okay.
Maybe like coffees and drinks. We have people walk because there's no convenience store anymore. There used to be in the plaza, but they've converted to something else now.
Mm-hmm. Okay, thanks.
Anyone else?
You're welcome.
No.
Good. All right, I'd like to make a motion to approve site plan of application fourteen sixty-five applicant T Morgan Matarra. Proposal, change of use of a three hundred and ten square foot portion of the existing motel office to a retail use. With the following conditions and recommendations. One, it is recommended that the applicant follow the advice of Assistant City Planner Nate Nardi Cyrus in his August fifteenth email to city planner, specifically regarding future lighting and signage. The applicant shall follow, number two, the applicant shall follow the comments of Edward Tauzy, WPCA Administrator, in his August eleventh, twenty twenty-three email to the city planner regarding sewer discharge permitting. Number three, the applicant shall be required to stripe and mark the handicap space on the site and place signage for the handicap space as required by law.
I have a motion, I have a second.
Second, Tom Tomlin.
Thank you, Tom. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed, so moved. Good luck, sir.
Thank you.
Moving on to agenda item number D, special exception twenty-three dash zero five applicant McCall Behavior Behavioral Health Network. Location one seventy-six Midgen Avenue. Proposal group care facility for seven residents. We need to set a public hearing date. The suggested date is September twentieth, twenty twenty-three. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion, I have a second. Thank you, Diane. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed, so moved. Moving out to agenda item number six E, modification to site plan fourteen thirty applicant Greenstone Investments Inc., Leila Campo. Location two thirty-two Clug Hill Road. Proposal modifications to previously approved recreational park entry, driveway and office registration building is the applicant in attendance.
Yes, as well as our engineer, Ryan from SLR Engineering.
Thank you, Leila. Go ahead.
So just briefly, obviously, we've become familiar faces for you as we develop this project. And we've come to the conclusion that our forever building that we would like to build um at the entrance is going to need to wait a year or two, and we would like to make use of one of the metal buildings that's on the structure. And so we're coming with a design to um allow us to get the campers back to that section of the property. And it's not a drastic change. It also gets us back up to the ninety-three sites that we were originally at because we're carving out one of the little sections that was a little offshoot. So with that, I will stay on, but turn it over to Ryan.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, with your permission, I'd like to share my screen.
Go ahead, Ryan.
Thank you. For the record, my name is Ryan McAvoy. I'm a licensed professional engineer with SLR Consulting. Um, and if you could, let me know when you can see this.
I got it.
Okay, so very quickly, um, the last time we were in front of the commission, we had a driveway configuration that came up from Clug Hill Road to a office building in a roundabout located in the roughly southern portion of the property. Um, that is the building that Leila referred to as their future building or that we now refer to as a future building. And what we're doing is we are putting that sort of pumping the brakes on that for the short term and putting that into a phase five configuration. And then the driveway will continue to the north past the existing house. Again, this configuration, this driveway layout is consistent with the past approval. The main difference is that the RVs will stack at the um existing metal building that will be converted to at least temporarily the office space and bathrooms. Uh, and then when they go through the check-in process, they'll enter into the RV sites, which is, I would argue substantially similar to what we had before. And there was a portion of RV sites of an offshoot, little driveway. The seven sites over here to the east of the existing metal building, those seven sites have been more or less reallocated back into the the body of the campground itself. Um, there is not a drastic change in um site grading, earthwork, not a drastic change in site stormwater drainage. Uh, this is really just a temporary measure to provide for RV staging, RV check-in near a building that will be temporarily converted to office and and bathrooms. Um, that is a very brief overview. Um, we do, we are not abandoning the building, the roundabout or the parking associated with the building. It is just being um um, sort of delayed for cost considerations for the for the short term.
Once phase five is established at some point in the future, would that metal building still be in use? As it's intended for today?
It would, it would remain. The bathrooms would stay permanently. The uh, the way we're breaking it up, we think we can keep the other part either for recreation or potentially for light vehicle maintenance, like a place to store our rental golf carts. But the bathrooms that we're building will be permanent. Um, there are some state requirements that can be waived, but it's probably better just not to ask them to that every, you know, campsite be within a certain number of feet of a bathhouse. So we think this will achieve uh, what the state's looking for if we leave that there on a permanent basis. So there will be nothing temporary about it. It'll be nice finishes, um a pleasing, you know, uh, functional bathhouse.
Thank you.
When you say bathhouse, you mean just toilets or is it going to include showers?
It will have five showers in it.
Thank you. Any other commissioners have any questions?
No.
Jeremy, you got a memo?
Yep.
Please.
Leila Campo has filed an application to modify previously approved site plan number fourteen thirty. The application requests the following modifications to previously approved plans. One, temporarily temporarily relocate the check-in.
One, temporarily temporarily relocate the check-in area, office, parking lot and bathrooms to an existing building on the property in the center of phase one. Two, modify the phase lines for the project to construct a previously approved check-in store building and parking lot in the southern end of the project later later in the project to phase five. Three, eliminate RV cabin sites from phase five. Four, modify driveways for traffic flows to the new temporary check-in area. A special exception and site plan approval was granted by the Planning and Zoning Commission for this project on February fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, with plans revised through February ninth, twenty twenty-three. A previous modification was approved on April nineteenth, twenty twenty-three to realign driveways and check-in building and add a pond near the check-in building. A por- a portion of the previous phase five containing RV cabin sites along the eastern edge of the proposed campground has been eliminated. No new use changes for the property are proposed as part of this application. No public hearing was is required for this modi- modification proposal to the previously approved site plan. The review of this modification application is guided by the RV park regulations in section six point seven point three of the zoning regulations as well as site plan requirements of section eight point four. A set of plans has been submitted titled Litchfield Hills, Connecticut, KOA Campground, two three two Clug Hill Road, Torrington, Connecticut Regulatory Submission by SLR Cheshire, Cheshire, Connecticut, dated November ninth, twenty twenty-two, revised to August seventh, twenty twenty-three, thirty-one sheets. Also submitted, also submitted is a separate truck turning movements sheet for the modified driveway dated August fourth, twenty twenty-three. Staff staff has been in regular communication with the property owner and engineer to discuss these revisions prior to this meeting. Other items of note, one, I recommend that all conditions of the original approval under site plan number fourteen thirty and April twenty twenty-three modification for the site remain in place, except as otherwise noted in this memo. Two, final plans and Mylar sheets are required to be filed in accordance with the original approval prior to work occurring on the property. Three, zoning and grading permits are required to be obtained or modified prior to work in each individual phase on the property in accordance with the original approval and modifications after the filing of Mylar sheets with the city clerk. Four, relocation of parking and two approved handicap accessible spaces are acceptable, in my opinion. The applicant should demonstrate that the grading of the spaces and the accessible path to the building meet ADA requirements. Other staff comments, all staff comments and requirements from previous approvals and modifications remain in effect, except as those noted, except those noted below. Economic Development, this modification was not referred to Rista Malanca, AICP, Torrington Economic Development Director, Assistant City Planner, Nate Nardi Cyrus, Assistant City Planner, in an email to the city planner dated August fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, stated that he has no comments on this modification. Architectural Review Committee, this application was not referred to the ARC for comment. Torrington Area Health District, TH, THD review and comment to the city planner is required for this modification. No comments have been received from THD to date. Um, engineering, in an email to the city planner dated August sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, Paul Kunsens, City Engineer, submitted comments to be addressed by the applicant regarding details on the modified driveway configuration. See attached. Police Traffic, this modification was not referred to to Police Traffic Sergeant Dustin Baldus for comment. Fire, no comments were received from Fire Marshal Edward Becetta. Comments from the original approval regarding cisterns and dry hydrant locations on the final plans are still in effect. WPCA, this modification was not referred to Ray Drew, Public Works Director for comment. Building Department, no comments were received from Building Official Kevin Gillette for this modification. Comments from the original approval regarding building permit requirements are still in effect. Conclusion, per review and comment by city staff, I recommend approval of this revision to approved site plan number fourteen thirty, two three two Clug Hill Road and tax assessor map two fifteen block zero zero three lot zero zero four for a proposed RV park and associated property improvements with the following approval conditions and recommendations. All conditions stated in the initial initial approval of February fifteenth, twenty twenty-three and modification approved April nineteenth, twenty twenty-three remain in effect, except as noted below. One, the applicant shall address comments of Paul Kunsens, City Engineer, in his August sixteenth, twenty twenty-three comments to the city planner regarding driveway details. These comments shall be addressed to the satisfaction of the city engineer on the final filed plans and prior to issuance of modified zoning or grading permits to begin construction on the revised portions of the project. Two, the applicant shall submit approval from the Torrington Area Health District for the revised plans prior to issuance of the modified zoning permit or grading permits to begin construction on the revised portions of the project. Three, each phase shall be completed in its entirety prior to opening for operation. Four, revisions to the existing zoning and grading permits are required prior to the alteration or use of the site for the modified areas with the exception of those activities previously authorized under existing zoning and grading permits outside of the modified areas. Five, in accordance with section eight point four point three and eight point four point six of the of the zoning regulations, the following shall be submitted to the city planner. A, two paper copies of the full approved final plan set, including the engineer's stamp and chairman's signature box on the title page. B, one Mylar copy of each plan sheet IN GR one, GR two and GR three for filing with the city clerk in accordance with section eight point four point three point P of the zoning regulations. The Mylar sheet shall bear a chairman's signature box, a copy of the approval letter from the commission, an engineer's seal and live ink stamp. C, Mylar sheet shall be filed by the applicant with the city clerk after signature of the chairman and prior to the approval of modified zoning and or grading permits to begin construction or site work.
Thank you, Jeremy. Any commissioners have any comments?
All set.
Good.
Yeah, have anything else to summarize or you're all set? You're good?
Okay.
All right, go ahead, Greg.
Like to make a a motion to approve site plan modification number fourteen thirty. Applicant Leila Campo. Proposal modify a previously approved site plan number fourteen thirty for a proposed recreational vehicle park and associated property improvements to relocate office, check-in building, driveway, parking lot and bathrooms with the following conditions and recommendations. Number one, the applicant shall address comments of Paul Kunsens, City Engineer, in his August sixteenth, twenty twenty-three comments to the city planner regarding driveway details. These comments shall be addressed to the satisfaction of the city engineer on the final plans and prior to the issuance of a modified zoning or grading permits to begin construction on the revised portions of the project. Two, the applicant shall submit approval from the Torrington Area Health District for the revised plans prior to the issuance of modified zoning or grading permits to begin construction on the revised portions of the project. Three, each phase shall be completed in its entirety prior to opening for operation. Four, revisions to existing zoning and grading permits are required prior to its alteration or use of the site for the modific- modified areas with the exception of those activities previously authorized under existing zoning and grading permits outside of the modified areas. Five, in accordance with sections eight point four point three and eight point four point six of the zoning regulations, the filing shall be submitted but to the city planner. A, two paper copies of the full approved final plan set, including the engineer's stamp and chairman's signature box on the title page. B, one Mylar copy of each site plan sheet IN GR one and GR two and GR three for filing with the city clerk in accordance with the sections eight point four point three point P of the zoning regulations. The Mylar sheet shall bear a chairman's signature box, a copy of the approval letter from the commission, an engineer's seal and a live ink stamp. C, Mylar sheet shall be filed by the applicant with the city clerk after the signature of the chairman and prior to the approval of modified zoning or grading permits to begin construction or site work.
I have a motion to have a second.
Diane Carroll seconds.
Thank you, Diane. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All is so moved. Good luck.
Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
Yeah.
All right, before we move on to agenda item number six F, I just want to make a a note to the commissioners. Uh, everyone should have received uh, an update of the Planning and Zoning Commission twenty twenty-three meeting dates. Please make note of November fifteenth meeting is canceled and November twenty-ninth, there's a special meeting. All right, moving on to agenda item number six F, site plan fourteen sixty-one, applicant James Mogob, location four forty-six Allison Drive, proposals for accessory dwelling unit in a single family house. For the record, I am going to recuse myself from this application site plan and Commissioner Ferrasino will proceed with the meeting. Thank you.
Okay, um, okay, go ahead.
Let me get on him.
Oh, you want to move? See you, Greg. Okay, we proceed. Um, is the applicant here? Okay, let's bring up here to the to the podium and give us your presentation, please.
Very thin podium up there.
Yeah, right.
Very thin table up here now.
I know. There's only three of us to be.
Well, good evening, zoning board. Uh, I'm here and respectfully request that our uh our site plan gets approved.
Okay, so can you just make sure you put your name and address to in for the record?
Sure, I'm James Mogob and I live at four four six Allison Drive, Torrington, Connecticut.
Okay. You want to give us short description of what it is exactly you want to do with the property?
We added an in-law apartment to our home and uh we're trying to get approval from the city and.
Okay. Okay.
All right, just I I could just give a just a quick bit of background. Um, there was there was a home addition done a couple of years ago. Um, and, you know, how however it happened, we weren't aware that the home addition was for the purpose of an in-law.
Okay.
Um, we we wound up getting a referral from the from the assessor's office. Um, so so a notice was sent, um, and now we're just trying to, you know.
Just clean it up.
Yeah, clean it up, exactly.
Okay. All right, so why don't we just go ahead and let you go ahead and Jeremy, read your memo and we can move this along.
Yeah, that'll give us a summary anyway.
Yep.
James Mogob has filed an application for property at four four six Allison Drive, assessor's map two four seven block zero zero nine lot zero two two for construction of a six hundred and fifty-four square foot accessory apartment in a recently constructed home addition. The property is owned by James and Rebecca Mogob is zero three point, zero point three four acres in area and is located in an R fifteen S residential zone. The current use of this property is as a single family dwelling. The proposed use of the addition as an accessory apartment is allowed by site plan approval in the R fifteen S zone under section three point one, table of permitted uses, subsection one point two five accessory apartment and section five point one accessory apartments. I reviewed the property history and found no previous site plan or special exception approvals for this property. Plans submitted are titled existing basement and apartment floor plans, square footage, four four six Allison Drive, Torrington, Connecticut, zero six seven nine zero, prepared for James Mogob, four four six Allison Drive, no preparer noted. Dated July twenty first, twenty twenty-three, one sheet. Staff has met previously with the property owner to discuss the project prior to this meeting. Other items of note, one, a zoning permit was issued in September twenty twenty-one to construction to to can construct an addition of three hundred and sixty-eight square foot in footprint. The zoning office was unaware of that the purpose of the addition was for an accessory unit and an enforcement notice was sent by Nate Nardi Cyrus, Assistant City Planner on November thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, upon being notified by staff in the assessor's office. The applicant is now before the commission to approve the existing unit. Two, in accordance with the zoning regulations, section five point one point one, the accessory apartment shall be a minimum of four hundred square feet and a maximum of thirty thirty percent of the area of the main house, not to exceed one thousand square feet. According to the area specifications chart on the submitted plans, the total square footage of the house is two thousand two hundred and sixty-four square feet in floor area. Therefore, a maximum apartment size of six hundred and ninety, six hundred and seventy-nine square feet of net floor area is allowed. A review of the floor layout plan shows a net floor area of six hundred and fifty-four square feet for the accessory apartment in compliance with the regulations. Three, the home addition meets all of the property line setback requirements for an accessory apartment addition as required in section five point one point four of the regulations. Other staff comments, Assistant Planner, Nate Nardi Cyrus, Assistant City Planner, in an email to the city planner dated July twenty-six, twenty twenty-three, offered the following comments on the plans. This site plan application is in response to a zoning enforcement action taken by the land use office. If the application is approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission, the property would be compliant with the city of Torrington zoning code and the enforcement file will be closed. Architectural Review Committee, this project was not referred to the ARC for comment. WPCA, Edward F. Towsey the third, WPCA Administrator, in a memo to the city planner dated August second, twenty twenty-three, submitted comments on sanitary sewer discharge permitting requirements. See attached. City Engineer Paul Kunsens, Police Traffic Sergeant Dustin Baldus, Building Official Kevin Gillette and Fire Marshal Edward Becetta all responded to the city planner stating that they have no comments or concerns regarding this application. Conclusion, I recommend approval of site plan number fourteen sixty-one four forty-six Allison Drive for a six hundred and fifty-four square foot accessory dwelling unit within an existing home addition with the following conditions and recommendations. One, the owner shall follow up with Nate Nardi Cyrus, Assistant City Planner for final closure of the existent of the existing enforcement case on the property. Two, the applicant shall obtain all necessary sanitary sewer discharge permits in accordance with submitted WPCA Administrator comments.
Okay. All right, this is pretty simple. Uh, we got it really locked out. Is there anything else you want to add, Mr. Mogob?
Nope.
Okay.
That's about it.
All right, so under that circumstance, I'd like to make a motion to approve site plan fourteen sixty-one, applicant James Mogob, location four forty-six Allison Drive, proposal accessory dwelling unit and single family house with the following recommendations and conditions. Number one, the owner shall follow up with Nate Nardi Cyrus, Assistant City Planner, for final closure of the existing enforcement case on the property. Number two, the applicant shall obtain all necessary sanitary sewer discharge permits in accordance with the submitted submitted WPCA Administrator comments. So we have a motion. We have a second?
Second, Tom Telman.
Okay, we have a second. Do we have any more discussion on this motion from the commissioners?
I'm good.
Okay, then let's.
All set.
Okay, then all in favor?
Aye.
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 Posed. Okay. Good luck.
Thank you for your help.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too. Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda.
So, um, just before we before we jump into, you know, any discussion anyone might have on the uh on the on the violation log, um, I sent out, I just sent out emails earlier today on the on the training um opportunity coming up. Uh, we just have a few other.
I didn't see that. Okay.
You didn't see it today?
No, well, I've been at work.
Oh, oh, yeah. So so I sent it around lunchtime today. Um, there's the fifth Thursday thing coming up, uh, one of those fifth Thursday events coming up uh within HCOG. Um, this this doesn't uh, this doesn't satisfy the the affordable housing part, but the it it does count towards the rest, the kind of the collective four hours every everyone's got to do.
It's satisfied.
I think you're done. Yeah, yeah. I said I sent a summary of who's done and who who still owes. Donovan Donovan's got to attend.
Yes, uh, yep, I understand that.
All right, I've already signed up.
Yeah, so I think Donovan still owes us four hours. We have a few other people that owe, I think, two and a half um, and and a bunch of other people that completed it because they went to the because they went to the um the bar, the Bar Association Day. Um, so uh, any anyone that's left or even the people that have satisfied it, it's the refresher course for the with Yukon Clear. Um, that one where they go through all the commissioner, um, you know, requirements, uh, it's like um uh, freedom of, not freedom of information, um, uh, all the basic stuff like roles and responsibilities, um, you know, uh, when to recuse yourself, you know, how to, you know, all all that basic stuff. Uh, it's a good refresher um, for if you haven't been through it, so.
Uh, thanks for doing that, Jeremy. I appreciate it.
I was gonna say I can't go because I have to, I'm I'm not going to be, not going to be here that afternoon, but.
Okay.
Um, if if anyone, if if when you see that email, anyone can RSVP themselves or or I can do it for you. Just just drop me an email either either way.
Okay.
It's got my RSVP today.
You did today? Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
All right, item number seven, correspondence. We're back to the item A, zoning and light violation update. I think we have a copy.
All right, item number seven correspondence. We're back to the item A zoning and blight violation update. I think we have a copy of that, but.
Yeah, if you.
We have any anything to note?
If you have any questions on specific things, I am dealing with for, you know, the. The big site plan things is I'm still dealing with the the Batchy Brew site on East Main Street. We do have the. Engineer and involved again to update the plans so we can move forward with it, but. You know, they've essentially been been operating without. Conforming to any of the conditions that we that we granted last October. So we're coming out a year now. It with with being in operation without doing anything that they're supposed to do on that site, so. We did get the engineer back involved, so he's working on on the final plans so we can get them filed and get some of the work done on site.
I have a question regarding the property on the, is it McDermott? And I wonder will we approve the. The retail cannabis store.
Yep.
All those RVs that are parked there and everything, isn't that all not supposed to be there?
Right, so one of the. Conditions of that approval was was to bring everything into compliance on that property and Nate has started a enforcement case on it.
They have, okay.
Yeah, just to, I mean, there may be a a switch of owners on that property or whatever, but we just wanted to make sure we had it in writing. So so it went out to the current owner. So so they can start dealing with their with their tenant. I I don't even know how official the tenants are on that site or or anything, so. Lot of lot of violations. There's there's got to be easily a half dozen zoning violations on that site, so.
The, okay, is there any other? No, I mean, if you want to update people on what we found out about the peddler something?
Oh, yeah, I mean, you know, there's. There's, it's not, the peddler, I I can say is still an ongoing case. The there was a court date last week. And there'll be a walkthrough that the judge in the case wants to take a walkthrough of the site, so there hasn't been a. Of a, it hasn't been an official ruling on it yet. But it's been to through two fairly lengthy court days.
And we're thinking, at least I think the general consensus was to get a decision is going to take about thirty days, probably.
At least, yeah.
Minimum. And.
Because it's, but we are, I at least I believe, looking at the judicial record around the state is we are. A test case for the for the receivership statute. Because the one other case that I'm aware of in Hartford was resolved with a with sort of a foreclosure action, so. It never really got a a decision on the receivership. At the state level in the courts.
I think they convinced the owner to allow them to foreclose and gave him the money.
Yep.
Anyways, I wanted you guys to at least understand where that is.
I mean, beyond that, if you look at the list and you have any specific questions, just drop me an email or or Nate or give us a call.
Sounds good.
There's a lot going on.
Yeah. All right, with that, we'll all entertain a motion to adjourn.
No move.
I'll make a motion. Diane.
Anyone want to second that?
I second.
Okay, I guess we don't want to leave. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, good night, everyone.
Thank you, everybody.
Good night.
Thanks, thanks, Greg.
Meeting is adjourned.